All right. H W Cam is recording and Michelle, you got the Zoom recording?
Yes.
All right. Then welcome back to the February 7th, 2023 Wenham Select Board Meeting. We adjourned for executive session and now we're returning to open session. President Gary Cheeseman.
Peter Clay.
Diane Bueker.
All right. Thank you. And as usual, we'll start off with a public input for those things that do not appear on the agenda. And Michelle, any?
I thought Harriet had.
She did have her hand raised.
Patrick Waddell does.
Harriet was up before we came. I think you have to start the slideshow and then. Well, I don't think you need the slideshow. Do you see the people?
I can put them on.
Yes, it looks like we're frozen though on the picture on the right.
Are you there, Patrick?
Yes, ready, uh, great. So as we prepare for the spring town meeting and the election, there are two important issues that must make it onto the April 6th ballot. The first is the increase of the select board from three to five members. We've had two town meeting votes, a legislative approval, and Governor Baker also signed that we can move forward to vote on the final stage of increasing the select board. So that must make it on to the April ballot. The second is moving the town clerk position from its current elected status to appointed. The town clerk job has changed greatly with pandemic even before. And in order to enact the change to move to a professional town clerk, it both needs to be on the warrant and the ballot to get it done this year. So we don't delay any further. So again, two items that need to go on the ballot, town clerk appointed, elected to appointed, and select board from three to five members. And then the town clerk has to be on the warrant as well in order for the town to move forward with the change from elected to appointed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. And then.
Is there anybody else?
Harriet Davis was waiting to speak.
Her hand is down now.
Okay.
So is anybody else hands up to speak?
No.
All right. Then we'll close the public input session and move on to announcements. Steve?
Just getting the slideshow up here. Is that? See it?
You don't see it?
I'm just seeing a joke.
I'm seeing the slideshow. No, I just see attendees. I'm happy to talk about the fair. Do we want to just talk about it?
Hmm.
Yeah, I wanted to if you want to stop.
Sure. So tomorrow, Wednesday, February 8th, from 5:00 to 8:00, the Hamilton Wenham League of Women Voters is running a volunteer fair where they have organized lots of nonprofits and government agencies to be at the community house with flyers and information and great ways to meet people, great ways to find things to do within town. And we will be there, I think later we're talking about our schedule there. But I think a lot of boards and committees from both towns will be there. So it's definitely a place to be tomorrow if you have nothing else to do between 5:00 and 8:00.
And the next one I'll take is the Master Plan Advisory Committee welcomes everyone to hold a meeting in the box. So you can obtain those from Margaret Hoffman upstairs in the town hall. It's a full package with a clipboard, pens, paper, and a script that will take you through a group of people getting together to vision what Wenham should look like and how they see their particular issues that cover everything from housing to recreation to open space to transportation and so forth. So we encourage people to either attend the weekly meetings which occur Wednesday evenings and Thursday mornings at the library, or come in, get a box, and you can run your own show.
If I could put in a plug for Sunday, Super Bowl Sunday, but before the Super Bowl at 3:00, the WVIS is hosting one at the T House.
All right.
So if anyone's available, that's a good time to come.
Next one is the, also on the Wenham Master Plan. So we've completed the first phase of the Master Plan, which essentially describes what Wenham looks like today. The report for that is up on the website and we're soliciting comments or edits to that for report, which is kind of extensive, I think 100 pages plus. And now we'll be moving into Phase Two that we have the meeting in the box. And I think a little bit later we talk about the surveys coming out as well.
So it's a, it's a big document to look through?
Yes.
And then asking for comments on that? I have not done that yet. I have to get on that.
It's actually pretty easy to skim.
Okay.
Yes. So it's a.
All right, I gotta look at that.
Kind of interactive survey. It's a very comprehensive and gives you some chance there. You want to talk about town meeting schedule? Peter?
Okay, so we have the town meeting Saturday, April 1st, 2023, 1:00 PM at Buiker. And then the town election is Thursday, April 6th, 2023, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM, excuse me, at Town Hall. Early voting dates and times to be announced soon. Vote by mail applications available.
Here, in Town Hall, yes.
In Town Hall.
In Town Hall, the link doesn't.
Nomination papers are available in the town clerk's office. All papers must be returned by February 16th at 5:00 PM. And please contact the town clerk if you have any questions.
So we have, some people have taken out papers, couple of return papers, but we still have vacancies. As you can see, there's a seat available on the Board of Assessors. There is a, I think there so far we don't have full contact from school committee, but there's perhaps a seat that has not been run for there. And we have, it looks like, an open seat on the library Board of Trustees that no one has pulled papers for.
I've tried to get a couple of people to run for school committee and everybody remembers the past.
Yeah, it's different now.
Where it was, as Dana Alara said, it was the schools against the towns. But we just went through an incredible process this fall and it was peace.
Collaborative amongst the towns and the schools, also within the school committee and the superintendent. Everybody's working really well together.
Right. So for those who.
Are scared.
Remember the old days. And it's a new day out there. And so if you've got kids in the schools and you care and you want to, and you see things that you think should be improved upon, please run.
So there could be someone running, another person running in, in Hamilton. We don't know.
Yes, because here papers come out of the.
Yes.
School district building.
So maybe, maybe Steve or can, or Joe can check. So we get a better idea if there's any Hamilton candidates for that. But the Board of Assessors is super important. A lot of talk about assessing and stuff like that. This is the best way to get involved. So if I could put in another plug though, I'm concerned that we do have a vote coming up on the ballot moving our select board from three to five. If we don't have enough people to run for those, these positions, I'm concerned about having enough people to run for all the positions. So the town wants a larger select board. I think it's a great idea. It's gotta be people stepping up.
Yes.
So we're asking you, maybe we'll see you tomorrow at the volunteer fair. I want someone to go.
All right. Next announcement is the 2023 Annual Census run by the town clerk. You've received the mail census request to all Wenham residents. So please fill out those census forms, get them back to the town clerk. Very important, not only to have a complete census of the town, but also that's the basis for street listing. But even more important is the fact that a lot of state programs, i.e. money, is based upon populations of the town. So let's all get the census forms in and then see, make sure that we have all the credit at the state level that we deserve. All right, I'll, let me talk also. Next announcement is Maple Woods Affordable Housing Lottery Information. So Anna Cisik will be joining us at the next select board meeting to give the full presentation. But they will also, most importantly, here are the two dates to write down. April 3rd at 11:00 AM, either by Zoom or in person at the library. And then also June 1st at 6:00 PM. So Anna and the team will be there to assist you in filling out applications for Maple Woods. There's 45 units over there. The allotment comes in two drawings. The first drawing will be for Wenham residents only, and we have upper 60% reserve for Wenham residents in the first drawing. So they'll select out of the hat, I think it's 28 or 29 of the units for Wenham residents. And then those that aren't picked in the first round, plus anybody from anyplace else, goes into the second round. But the most important thing is to remember that really this is a one-time chance for Wenham residents because after the, the units are occupied, the preference for Wenham residents goes away. So it's just on the first drawing that Wenham residents get the thing. There is a lot of information come out on flyers. You can find it online on the website and Harbor Light. And if you're thinking about moving, making that lifestyle change, then this is a great opportunity. And so April 3rd, 11:00 AM at the library on Zoom is your first chance on that one.
June 1st at 6:00 PM is also at the library?
Yes.
Okay, I think.
And at those meetings, they'll actually sit down with you and help you fill out the forms to apply.
And when are the forms due?
The forms will be due a little bit after that.
After that.
Not until July, so.
And you said Anna.
Cisik.
What, what organization is she in?
She's the Harbor Light.
She works at her.
She'll be doing the lottery. She's in charge of doing the lottery procedure.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Good.
So Steve, are we back with Zoom?
I believe we're back.
All right.
On track.
So we're up to the Senior Workoff Tax Rebate Program.
Okay.
And so we are, have this program for seniors. The, the requirements are that it has to be above the federal minimum wage, but at or below the state minimum wage. So the select board has set it at $15 an hour, which is the state minimum wage. And by the rules, you can get $1,500 credit off of your taxes by working that number of hours on the projects. So we've got quite a list of projects here that departments and organizations have put together. Obviously, some of them are just a few hours, some will fill up the 100 hours and carry you into the next year.
And this is a really nice specific list, but also it, you know, there's department office needs too. Sometimes it's just to be trained to, to cover the office and answer phones and.
Yes.
Be, so a lot of options there.
We have, we have a lot of that with, you know, there's a bunch of offices that are an office of one.
Right.
So, you know, any absence, sick, vacation, anything like that, you know, we can definitely use the hand answer phones, even if you're just answering the phone saying, I, you know, transferring them to other department.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great thing to do for sure.
So and I think that these lists that we've come up with appeals to a lot of different backgrounds and talents as well. So some down at COA, some in Town Hall, and a variety of efforts.
So the application for this is, besides being on the website, is from the COA and goes through.
Through Jim Reynolds. Jim Reynolds down at the COA runs this program.
Got it.
All right.
Am I going backwards?
Master planning, oh, that looks like a duplicate.
Oh, I'm going backwards.
All right.
Okay.
So I think, any other announcements? Otherwise, Steve, your town administrator's update?
All right. Just some updates on the budget and timeline. So as you know, it's a joint meeting with the Finance Committee tonight. So we'll be going over some of the, you know, some, some of the numbers that the Finance Committee has, has been reviewing over the past several weeks. In addition to that, some of the moving pieces that we have is, so we're still waiting on the school budgets, final numbers, and also the final numbers for the Fields Project. So they're voting on that at their school committee meeting this Thursday, the 9th. So once, once we get that, we can start to, you know, start to whittle down the final variables into getting our budget article put together. The CPC is voting on the 16th. So there is some potential impact to the capital improvement plan as far as West Wenham Park. I know there was some questions raised on, you know, could they fund more than requested for West Wenham Park? And would that reduce the, you know, the expected debt exclusion to fund the remainder of the project? And yes, it would. So we're waiting to see that before we finalize our capital improvement. Additionally, I don't know if folks are aware, but they did vote to not fund the town HVAC and security needs. So we're, we have to move forward through other, other means with those. All right, Gary, some Maple Woods updates, but Gary took care of that on, on the announcement. And we met with Representative Paracilla on Thursday morning for a good length of time. So we were supposed to, Sally Kearns was also supposed to be out, but she has had COVID. So it was just, it was just Representative Paracilla. And we just discussed, you know, the needs of the communities. I know some of the, we'd gone around to the departments and see, you know, what issues are outstanding that they'd like to get some feedback on. So we, you know, kind of filled them in on where we are being an MBTA community and some of our concerns around that, particularly around water flow and also the water restrictions that are imposed in what, what seems to be inequitably between the surface water communities and underground water communities. We talked about different pilot payments and things going on at Salem. City of Salem is putting through a, for their Salem Essex Sewers District, they're putting through a, they're trying to, well, they're trying to get a special act put through that would increase the cost of the pilot that the participating community is in from $500,000 to a million dollars a year with a 2% escalator or inflation, whatever's higher. And, you know, so that's not a direct, that doesn't impact Wenham now, but it's, you know, if we do end up having to go to some sort of a sewage that likely would be where our sewage would go. So we're watching that. And also as part of that is brought up negotiate, well, conversations about existing pilots that exist in the Commonwealth and are governed by various statutes based on use and date of acquisition. So, you know, I think that it could be a situation where we kind of look at all the pilots and some of the ones that are, were held to specifically Salem Beverly Water Board with a pre-1946 acquisition are, you know, relatively low compared to what the market would bring if they were developed. And, yeah, and so he's, you know, he wasn't aware too much on the MBTA community and the water stuff, but is going to do some research and get back to us. That's all I have.
Questions?
Beverly's an MBTA community though, so they must have to follow through, right?
Yeah, I mean, unless they already have the density.
It looks like they probably have the density, but they are a community that sort of.
I know Beverly is, the concerns with Beverly is too much growth. They're trying to reel it back now.
Yeah. It's a real concern in Beverly.
Yeah.
And certainly they are very unique. I think they're probably, you know, that size city, only one that actually has four stations as well.
Oh, so each station.
Well, so I'm not sure what their total is, but certainly the downtown area near the main station has seen tremendous growth in apartments and stuff over the last few years. All right, thanks, Steve. Chairs report, the most important thing up front here is to thank David Malin. So Steve can confirm that we have upstairs now the large printer. And we mean large, you know, it's 36, 48 inch printout. So that's going to be of great use by the planning department and the permitting department. So save us money not having to go out to commercial each time. So a big thank you to David Malin for that contribution. Peter, I think you've got some information on Wish.
I do. So we're in the process of making, turning Wish into a 501(c)(3) corporation, which means that the donations can be tax deduct, they're tax deductible, which is really good because, A, for people who are already giving, they can give more because of the benefit of the tax deduction and hopefully it'll make it more attractive to other people. That hopefully will be completed by June. And we had a really good board meeting today. We have two new members who are bringing more energy. And we're expanding our outreach programs. And I found out from my wife, who was on Wish years ago, that all of the outreach programs we're talking about are ones they were doing eight to 10 years ago and somehow something went wrong.
Reinventing here.
Right. I also have attended twice with Eric Mansfield, the North Shore Water Resilience Task Force. And they're, they're actually making progress. This is something that's being driven by Senator Bruce Tar, because basically his whole district is about three quarters of the Ipswich River watershed. And it was our second meeting. The first meeting was just basically everybody holding hands and saying, we're going to do something about this. And then this past meeting last week was, okay, here's what we're going to do. And there are basically three projects. The first one is to hire a consultant to talk about ways to smooth the water across the watershed. The second one is, I can make sure I get this word right, is to have a consultant build a hydro, hydrologic modeling tool to evaluate the options. And then the third one is hire, I shouldn't even call it a consultant, but somebody to go and call all the towns and say, what do you got going on? And hopefully that will allow people to, towns to better coordinate. So, oh, you're going to do that? Then I shouldn't do this. And that's all going to be done by June. And the only thing I will say is that people have been talking about doing stuff across the watershed for years. And I, I asked Eric Mansfield, our water guy, like what he, what he thought when we walked out of the meeting. He goes, you know, people have been talking about this forever, but it actually does seem like Bruce Tar is going to get something done. And the, one sort of comment I'll make is that Sally goes to those meetings, Jerry doesn't. So, and it, you know, you got the, you got Beverly, you got Salem, and you got the Beverly-Salem Water Board in those meetings.
And who's paying for these consultants and the tools and the coordinator, I would say is your last position?
It's really, it's short money. And we're not, we're not paying, we're not paying for it.
Oh, okay. All right.
I know, I know.
Short money, but it's not coming out of Senator Tar's pocket.
He's got some source, he calls him earmarks.
Okay. Good to know.
The legislature is taking this on.
That's awesome.
He's, he's really driving this hard.
Diane?
Were you all done?
Yeah.
So I wanted to thank, I think, Michelle, I think you started to work on the website a little bit to update some of the website, especially the front page, because we were just noticing that it was kind of falling apart and kind of old material on there. So thank you for starting that. It's not going to be easy. But revised, we're still using revised, right? I think they're pretty helpful. They are helpful. Do you find, okay, yeah, so I hope that's good. The other thing I wanted to bring up was Beverly Airport. I don't know if you've had any complaints lately. Facebook used to blow up usually in the summer, especially in my, in.
Your district, right?
Over there with all the noise and all this and whatever.
In Fairfield.
And willing for, yeah, you know, I, I don't know, I never hear anything. But there's been a lot of concerns about that. And so I had at least one resident reach out wanting to get involved with the Beverly Airport Commission. Steve mentioned that they had gone through a changing of the director, they might call it. There were some issues. So they're re-upping, but we don't have a seat at the commission.
And they're, they're in the process of lengthening.
Getting bigger?
Yeah.
Right. So, but the commission, when it started, Steve found out that Wenham took money as opposed to a seat on their board, whereas Danvers, I think, opted not to take the money and has at least one seat on the board. But my question then, I realize, is do they still pay that? I have a memory of maybe before Steve O., Steve, the assessor before Steve O. was also Steve.
All right.
I think something happened and maybe they're not paying that anymore?
I don't know the answer to that, but I know statutorily they're required to.
Okay.
It's, again, it goes back to what we were talking about. That's the, the pre-1946 acquisition of a municipal airport. And so Danvers had one too. And what, what it is, is it's a pilot payment by statute, payment and lieu of tax. And Danvers opted to enter an agreement that they would waive the pilot payment every year in exchange for two seats on the board. This is about 20, 25 years ago.
Yeah.
And, you know, they said that they're assuming that, you know, similar, Wenham was approached in a similar manner and likely probably decided to, you know, continue taking the pilot payment.
Right. So I think maybe we should, we should maybe think about looking into it and researching it. And there, I mean, there's a lot of changes going on over there, the different fuel. I mean, there's a lot of issues with the airport.
So just so you know, the, the, oh my God, the landing strip that they're lengthening is the east-west, not the, no, the north-south. So.
Which I don't know what that means. Whereas which way?
So what that means is they're. They'll be coming over Wenham.
Oh.
And not actually, it's the east-west one that flies over your house.
So they're lengthening the other one?
Yeah.
I don't hear of it anyway.
But the patterns can change by weather and so forth.
Yeah, Logan too has issues and we did have someone on a Logan.
All right, so that's Steve, you're going to take that on to.
Throw that back. We'll look into it.
All right.
They actually have a good website. They have all the history and.
So they're meeting, they have meetings and they're supposed, we, we should be posting them.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna link, well, we're gonna put a link on their section of our webpage that, that has, that goes to there where they post.
Where they post.
They keep it live.
The people who are most irate are actually the Danvers residents.
Yeah, and I'd like.
I don't know if they've met some of the Wenham residents, but.
I, you can see.
But I think, do they have to post in every community?
Yeah.
They're supposed to be posting in every community.
Yeah, I mean, and then, you know, and I talked to the town, the Danvers Town Manager. He says really the, the best way to get involved is to, you know, just attend their meetings, just like meetings here. They're posted, they're public meetings, they're open, they got minutes. It's the same thing, they got public comment.
Right.
They're currently, they're currently in the interview process to replace a, the director, the seat I believe has been vacant for 18 months or so. They're also looking at their good neighbor policy and noise policy currently. So it's a good time to get involved and.
Right. But they should, we should be posting it on our website.
Well, yeah, we are, we'll, we'll link it.
We can link it, but they're supposed to be posting it here. It's a, if it's a regional and it touches all of our communities, their posting should be on.
All right, I'm looking at that.
So they, they're, I haven't checked, I meant to check on the.
They should be posted on our calendar?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So then people don't have to go to that website to find when the meeting is so they could attend, they could just open up our, just to make it easier for them. You know what I mean? I'm all done.
All set?
All right.
Let's move on then to consent agenda. Peter, you want to make that motion?
Yeah. I moved to approve the open session minutes dated January 20th, 2023.
So I can't actually second it because I didn't read them.
All right.
I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Can we put them off?
And then roll call vote? Peter?
Yes.
Gary, yes?
No. Abstain, thank you.
Still passes. Very good. And thank you as always to Kathy, our recording secretary for immaculate minutes.
And word.
Yes. All right, new business, first one, ZB appointments will defer to a future meeting. We've got some changes with the current members' illness and so forth that we'll have to address. But currently, as the ZB has associate members, the associates will be pulled, pulled on to the committee to handle current work.
But so we do need people.
Yes.
To say that they're interested in the ZB so that we could look for associate.
Yeah, so we need people to move up into the associate role for sure. And we'll talk about that in a couple of weeks. All right, B, moving on here. Discussion. Discussion and vote on early voting hours. The town clerk has proposed to, uh, provide early voting hours for the April sixth election by having voting available on the dates posted there. So it's basically noon to six thirty on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, the week before, Wednesday ten to four, Thursday ten to four, and then Monday is the last day for early voting, April third from ten to four.
So this is early voting in person?
So, yeah, so this is early voting, this is separate and different from mail-in voting. So mail-in voting, you can come and get your applications and get the mail-in process going right now. The mail-in votes have to be returned to the town clerk by eight PM on April sixth. Postmarks don't count, you have to get them handed in, in the actual ballot to the town clerk by eight PM on election day. So, um, any discussion, Peter or Diane on?
Do, is there a vote from the Board of Registars on that? So early voting in person for a local election is a opt-in state mandate in the Votes Act, which means we need a vote from the Board of Registars and recommendation to us so that we can vote on it.
Alright.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So roll to the town clerk then, alright?
I think it should roll back and I, I don't think you would recommend doing that. Yeah, we just went over that, so I think you need a Board of Registars recommendation to do it.
I'll check on that.
Sorry.
Alright, item C. Discussion vote to set the schedule for our attendance, so five to eight tomorrow, hands up, anybody want to have some time there to attend?
I'm going to be there part of Wish.
Alright.
I'm going to be there too for other things, but I was, don't know if I want to start the five o'clock as select board, so if we're going to do hour by hour, I don't want to do the five o'clock.
Okay.
Because I'll be late.
I'll, I'll stay at five. Okay, you got the, both duties at five?
What time do you want? I mean, you'll be all over the place, but what time do we want to cover our table?
I'll do seven to eight.
Okay, I'll take the middle, I'll take the middle. Do we have, do we have something there? Do we have a table?
Yes, there'll be a table in the library set up.
Okay. And any, we can bring the Maple Woods.
Yep.
Vote by mail ballot applications, what else could we bring? Dog applications, I'm just thinking town clerk stuff, but, um, master plan, are they going to be there?
Master plan is there separately, yes.
You don't have to do that, right?
So the other big committees have.
Will attend.
So what we had to.
Human rights will be there.
Yeah.
We had to think about what you're going to say there, though, we got to get people involved, interesting, so fun.
I think there's, I think there's a kind of positive that came out of this whole crazy assessment thing, which is people are like, well, if you really care, then, you know.
Get involved.
Get involved, come to town meeting.
Take out papers for the assessors.
And get into this master planning process.
That too, lots of things to do, okay.
Alright.
So we're good on that.
Okay, so Board of Assessors meeting.
We don't need to vote to set this schedule right.
Alright, so, um, if we can, uh, get the Board of Assessors in on Zoom to join us and Todd, uh, as well.
I'll unshare, Joe, you can share the Zoom.
Who, I'm here.
Alright, hello, Tom, Tom Panis.
I can tell.
And hopefully you can identify John.
I don't know.
This is Todd, I'm here.
Alright, Todd, and, uh.
I'm, I'm here, John, you're going to be here. I'm here, we should call our meeting to order, John. So, uh, so moved. Second, all the favor, we're on. Alright.
Alright, thank you, Tom and John from the Board of Assessors. So this evening, Todd will be talking through with us the procedure for the FY twenty-three tax bill. So, Todd, why don't you start off with, and I know this is a, a long process that actually starts back in twenty-one, so, uh, Todd, if you can talk us through that?
Sure, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, as most of you know, or probably all know, I started after Labor Day in September, so, um, that being said, I was kind of put, put behind, uh, on the, you know, the assessing calendar, so to speak, so we were kind of rushing to, you know, do the analysis and get things done that needed to get done, so, um, you know, since we're in, you know, January, February right now, I guess I'll probably start here.
Well, Todd, can you go back and start, you know, what, just go through the sequence because we, your bills that went out recently actually start with data collected back in twenty twenty-one?
Correct, so, um, you know, the, the actual tax bills, which come out in January, um, are reflective of, you know, what was there on the property as of January first of the preceding year. So, come January, uh, once we get through the abatement process, uh, we start looking at sales, so for fiscal twenty-three, which we're in now, we were looking at sales data from calendar year twenty-one. And, uh, what we do is, uh, you know, we, we get deeds in daily, weekly, whatever it is, once a sale happens in town, uh, and it gets registered after registered deeds, we, uh, they email that to us, and then we'll qualify those sales. And what we mean by that is, you know, we do a little research into it, if it looks like a open market, uh, you know, arms-length sale, as they say, then we'll qualify that and we'll code it a certain way. And those open market, uh, arms-length sales are used, uh, in the pool of sales, which sort of determine, uh, what the market value of properties are in town. So as we go through that whole process that happens, you know, throughout the course of the year, we code them and we, you know, either keep them in the pool or we kick them out. And then, um, next, our next step is to, um, look at all those sales and look at what we have on record for these certain properties and fortunately with technology being the way it is these days, you can subscribe to the multiple listing service, MLS, um, which publicly, uh, you know, this is used by realtors, so you get a pretty good idea and a pretty truthful idea of what these properties are representing, so. When we, we run our sales data, I would, um, I was in a rush this year, um, printed up all the sales for the year for twenty-one, and then I went and looked at all the MLS listings, if they were available, um, and then, uh, you know, coordinated or calculated what we had on record, um, on these properties compared to how they are, um, on this market. So if, you know, we only have a certain amount of bathrooms and, and they now, you know, we had two and there's three, we would have that bathroom. The, uh, house was remodeled recently, we would make those adjustments on the record card as well to represent what was there, um, you know, what is, what that property is really about. And, uh, and then we would do that with all of our sales over the course of the year, and then come, uh, the start of the fiscal year of July, we stopped trying to make, uh, adjustments to properties, because we're going to start making adjustments to our database. So at that point, we're going to run reports, which typically, um, communities try, like we have Patriot Properties, there's Vision, which both Hamilton and Wenham used to run up until, I believe, nineteen or twenty. We can hire, uh, these companies to have them run reports in our database, uh, run, uh, sales to assessment ratios, uh, land, look at land and what raw land is selling for to try to get the, uh, right idea of what land values are in town and certain neighborhoods. You can run reports to look at, uh, particular styles of houses and, uh, cost tables, so there's a lot to it, there's a lot of moving parts. And when you start making adjustments to one style of house or neighborhood or whatever, it's going to, you know, have a, an effect on a multiple list of other things, so, uh, that's why, uh, I'm of the thought that it's better off to budget for, um, you know, these vendors to do that work because it's, it's quite a science, it's a lot of math to it, and, uh, you know, when you don't do that, you don't, uh, you don't, you may not get the results that you're looking for that are, you know, true reflexes of what's happening in your town, so, um, with that being said, once we, uh, you know, got into September of this year, we were in a hustle, uh, hustle to go through the sales data and look at the sales and look at the properties and see, you know, what we have on file and what else is in our database for, uh, you know, what, what the property reflected and made some changes and then ran these reports on our own. And, um, I had other, uh, assessing colleagues try to give me a hand with, um, running these reports, and then I actually had, because I'm also in Hamilton, I asked Patriots to, uh, get into our database and look as well and, uh, make some adjustments as best they could to try to, uh, you know, we have to submit all this information, all this data to the state, we've got the Department of Revenue, uh, uh, local services that we submit all of our values to and run all those reports and submit them to, so they can, uh, do their analysis on it to see if, you know, we're keeping up with what our office is supposed to be doing, so. It's my understanding that Wenham had a part-time assessor, I believe, with Steve for the last, I don't know, I'm not sure if that was his official role for the last six years he's been there, but, uh, he just, you know, obviously the manpower, it's a lot of work, uh, a lot of constant maintenance, and, um, have him being part-time, is having a hard time keeping up with the work, so I think a lot of the properties in town were severely, uh, under assessed and had been for some time. And, um, so when we went through this process, we were trying to do our best to get, get things close to what current market values are for these properties, but, uh, in the, in the same token, try not to be crushing people because, you know, we didn't want to be cranking our values up all at once, we were trying to, you know, systematically kind of step, step by step, try to, over the year, next year or two, try to bring them up to, to market value, it's hard to do, there's, you know, a lot of moving pieces, like I said, so, uh, we did our best and it's not a process that you can kind of get straight in one year, I think it's, you know, a multiple year situation, um, and process and, um, I think, you know, that might have, uh, or I would imagine that has created, uh, you know, the, uh, the storm that has been created and I just think, you know, a lot of other kind of neighborhoods, certain neighborhoods got hit harder than others, um, we've had some people join our Board of Assessors meeting a couple of weeks ago and voicing their opinions and their concerns, um, I can certainly relate and understand. So, you know, we're doing our best and, uh, I just don't think it's something that can be resolved in one year, I think it's, uh, something that's going to take, like I said, uh, you know, a couple of years, and we're in a revalue year this year, meaning, you know, the state requires, uh, the interim years between the five-year process of, uh, you know, you reevaluate, uh, revalue every property in town, but, um, every fifth year the state really, uh, has to submit substantially heavy amount of reporting to, um, you know, take a look at our database and make sure we're doing our job, so that's where we're coming into the twenty-four, and, uh, we've hired, uh, both in Hamilton and Wenham hired, um, a vendor patriot to, uh, assist us in looking at our, all of our cost tables, our land tables, um, the sales data to try to, um, get things, you know, in line with where they should be, so, um, that's basically the process and, um, happy to, you know, answer any particular questions.
So one quick question, Todd, so we sent everything off to the state and my understanding is that comes back in, uh, mid-November timeframe, and then thereafter, the tax rate is set and then the actual bills go out in December, do you have those dates?
Correct, right, so, you know, like I said, uh, come the fall, we stop making adjustments to our database and start running these reports, and then, um, you know, the state sort of dictates what they want from us and we send them what they, uh, what they're asking for and once they do their analysis on our data, they, um, you know, they will come back and say whether or not, uh, our values are certified, and that usually happens, um, you know, mid to late November, and, uh, once those values are certified, we can go on with the next step to, uh, you know, as you know, for the tax rate, once our values are certified, we know, uh, what our town value is for the tax levy and then we can take the budget, divide that by the, the overall values to get a tax rate, so, correct, Gary, that's, that's the process.
Diane, Peter, questions?
I heard this morning that, uh, there were eighty-four requests for abatement.
That is correct, yes.
Is that unusually high?
Maybe Tom, Tom might have the answer to it, yeah, Tom. He's a long experience.
Historically, in the last few years, we've had maybe fifteen, twenty requests. The eighty-four, in my mind, is not unusual, because when I came on the board back in two thousand and eight, we were getting high into hundreds, a hundred was a normal year of requests for abatement, so, I don't consider eighty-four out of line. Heck, I'm surprised it was only eighty-four.
But it was a big jump from what we've had recently, so, that's, that's.
Right, that's, that's my understanding, yeah. And you know what, just looking at previous assessments, uh, over the last five or six years, um, you know, that you have values, they should fluctuate with the, the real estate market, um, all things staying equal, depending on the budget and everything else, but, you know, values themselves should, should move with the market and as we all know, the real estate market's been trending upwards, you know, minus the last couple of years where it's, where it's been, you know, out of control, but over the last, you know, five, six, eight years, it's been trending upward and, you know, anywhere from five to seven percent anyway in, in the whole general area here, so we've had assessments in Wenham that have stayed, you know, hadn't moved in two years and then would jump twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars and, you know, on a land adjustment, but the building stayed the same and then, you know, they'd, they'd stay at the same level for the next couple of years, so, um, you know, that was, I think, one of the issues, the sticker shock, so to speak, with these folks, that, you know, they're looking at what their assessment was to represent what the local market is dictating and, you know, unfortunately, um, I'm not, I'm not a professional when it comes to making those adjustments, I did the best I could, um, and there, you know, there's certain neighborhoods, it seems, and certain styles of houses that, uh, that took a hit, and we're going to look at those and we're going to have our vendor, uh, take a real deep look at them and see if there's anything that we can further adjust and, um, get them better in line to maybe where they should be. But, um, you know, as we said, our values get certified by the state, so they ran reports and they, they do their statistical analysis and everything and we met the criteria, so it, you know, it may not have been perfect this time going through, but, um, you know, we'll go through it again and do the process again for this year and see where we end up, uh, in December of, uh, this year.
Anything else, Diane?
So, so all the, the data really didn't come back till the end of November, December, right? And, and the process you went through, Todd, was, was the state process? We, we did it the same way everybody does it?
Yeah, they, they, yeah.
Okay.
Everything needs to be submitted to the state in every community that's, you know, that's the process, they're the ones that sign off and, uh, once they, you know, we can't even move forward with, uh, thinking about setting a tax rate until the state, uh, certifies our values, so that's basically step one of the main process. I mean, moving, you know, heading into that process, there's quite a bit of stuff that we do, but, um, step one for setting the tax rate is getting those values certified, yes.
And, and did you say next year was the year that we go check all the properties and stuff? Is that, is that a reclassification?
They, uh, the state again, has a mandate, then you need to look at every property at least once every, you know, nine or ten years, so, um, that's the reason for going out and looking at them through sales, building permits, um, any opportunity I can get to go out and, um, you know, legitimately, legitimately knock on somebody's door and say, hey, I'm here for the permit, I know it was only to redo your roof, but the house hasn't been looked at, um, in a while, you know, it's been eight, nine, ten years or whatever, uh, can we go over your information? And I try to get in and, um, I try to get in every house I can and, uh, just make sure, you know, verify and certify that we have accurate information, if they don't want to let me in, I'm fine with that too, if I, if they're comfortable with just do, answering some quick questions on the doorstep, I'll do it. do it that way. Obviously, I prefer to get in, you know, if somebody has something to hide, that's on them, there's nothing I can do about it. So we try to get into every house, we look at every sale, we look at every building permit and we go out and go through the house, go through the properties, I measure the houses and do a full inspection. So we do it, it's not just certification years, it's every year, it's, you know.
Right, but there's so many, you have to do it every five years or something like that? Is that what's coming up? Or it's 10 years, every 10 years?
Yeah, so there's interim years, which we just went through. So, yeah, this is our revalue.
We're coming up, reval, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Right, every five years, yep.
So it's 2023, that's this year, okay.
Twenty, yeah, and actually it would be 24.
24. Fiscal 24.
Yeah, fiscal 24.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Diane?
Not for me.
Peter? All right, thank you, Todd. And Tom, does the Assessors Board have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. First, there is an opening on the Board of Assessors, a third member is needed and no one has come forward to fill in the interim seat. So the elections are coming up in April and if you can want to run for the office, please do so. Come here to Town Hall and from the Town Clerk and get the nomination papers and get them filled out and submit them and hopefully you will get elected in April, all right?
All right.
Secondly, I would add, I didn't plan on this since it was brought up, since we're going into the evaluation next year, I hope you will support a budget that will most probably include the full amount to reassess the town as we always did. The last time we did it on a three-year basis and actually by the time the third year was done, the first year was already ancient. So it didn't help much in equalizing the proper tax base. Hopefully this year we can get it fully funded and do it all in one year. And that makes everybody's house and home equal in the sense of values. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Todd. So you want to adjourn your committee then?
Yep. Okay, I move John, let me retire, adjourn.
Second.
Second. On paper, unanimous. And thank you very much.
All right, good evening.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Bye.
And now we'll, thank you. We'll invite in, the Finance Committee will be joining us.
My presence here, Gary.
Hello, Jim.
I don't see on my screen other members.
All right, so perhaps, are we getting the other members in?
Steve, can you, are the other members present, Steve?
Jeff is.
We see Scott.
Deirdre's there.
Dano Djokovic.
Jeff is there.
Jeff Calder.
Jeff Calder.
And Scholmberger.
Could the FinCom members unmute and take attendance?
I'm going to call the Finance Committee meeting to order at 7:53 for a joint meeting with the Board to Select. I'll take a roll call vote, please, of those present. James Purdy.
Deirdre Karate.
Scott Scholmberger.
Jeff Calder. Did you say Dano was here?
He was earlier.
Is he still on there?
No.
Nope.
Doesn't.
Doesn't appear to be on.
On the list, all right. So you got the quorum there, Jim.
So Dano is not showing up? I know he was traveling, he mentioned to me about a week ago that some of the meetings may be difficult.
All right, but you've got the quorum anyhow, so we're good.
We have a quorum.
All right, so let's, let Steve give us the quick overview of the budget progress to date. Yep.
If I could, excuse me.
Go ahead, Jim.
If I could, let me just give a quick overview of the Finance Committee's activities to date.
All right.
And then we can, is that acceptable?
Sure, that's good.
And then we can move into the operational questions and the capital questions that Steve has referenced. So just for those citizens that may be listening, the operational budget has been presented to the Finance Committee on a number of occasions. The first meeting was on December 10th with both the Select Board and the Finance Committee for about a five-hour meeting where every department had came in and presented their budget, the rationale for the requests that they were making. And we heard that at that time and took it under consideration. Subsequent to that meeting, we have met five times to review budgets. We have met multiple times with, several times with all of the departments and requesting further information or clarification on certain parts of their budget. After each of those meetings where we went through eight to 10 department budgets at each meeting, we took an initial vote to support those budget requests pending any further changes as we went through the process. So at this point, the Finance Committee has given initial support and approval of the budgets as we have gone through. There have been changes in the budgets as we have gone through, too. And Steve might reflect on those as we go through. So that's where we stand. As Steve mentioned earlier in this meeting, the capital budget is still to be refined and there's still some outstanding pieces of that that the Finance Committee, as well as the Select Board, need to understand better to make decisions on how we expend the, and respond to the capital request. There are a few remaining smaller items on the operational budget that are being worked on. Steve, Mr. Pulis, Town Administrator, is working with Parks and Recreation to resolve or come to a beginning working agreement with the Town of Hamilton concerning Pleasant Pond. The health insurance, MIAA health insurance is still outstanding in terms of a final figure. And there's union negotiations, of course, that are ongoing and we don't have final information on that. I am pleased to report, and I want to thank Steve and Jamie for the work they put into this, as well as the Finance Committee, that we, at this point in time, were able to meet our obligations for operations within the two-and-a-half levy limit inclusive of new growth and local receipts. That's a positive position to be at this point. The other important thing, and we've avoided this in the past few years, that we are not using cap, excuse me, free cash to fund our operations. That is a kind of a no-no, if you will, in terms of how we use our funds. We are using the free cash funds to assist with capital, but not with operations. So I'm feeling positive about the budget. There's no override for the operations. There is a borrowing, debt exclusion piece of this budget for a portion of the capital. And we'll discuss that. But there's no override from the schools, a portion of the budget, which is approximately this year 52% of the budget, or from town operations. So that's what I'd like to kind of give a general update at this point. Of course, there will be a report in the warrant, warrant book, as well as a town meeting. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Jim. So Steve, we have, what, three guests on tonight, Police, Fire and Health to provide some information as well?
Yeah, so.
Why don't you go into the overview and then?
Yeah, so a quick request from the Finance Committee at our last meeting, we're discussing the Board of Health. They had some more, they had some questions about the operations that I was unable to answer and requested that a representative from the Board of Health be in attendance today, which I believe.
She is.
Mary Beth Tang is here today. Additionally, the Police Chief and Deputy Fire Chief are both in attendance to add some color to their departmental requests. And then once we go through that, we can talk about timeline.
All right, then, can we get Mary Beth Tang on?
Actually.
Oh, Dr. Tang, all right. Thank you.
Good evening, Select Board and Finance Committee. This is Andrew Tang. I'm the Chair of the Board of Health and I just wanted to comment about our budget. We actually have a relatively small budget of all the departments in the town. But I want to specifically make a remark about a capital request and actually ask for a little bit more. So if you look at our budget, really for salaries, everything just went up 2% with COLA. And you see that we have, actually those are salaried, there are three individuals, the Animal Inspector, the Assistant Health Agent, then the Public Health Nurse. And then we have, for our Health Agent is actually a contractor, so that's on a separate line on the, in our account. And overall, if you look at just the salaries, it's about a 2% or 1.7% increase. The one item that is really of necessity is actually, we no longer have a functioning vaccine refrigerator or freezer. In early 2022, both devices failed. We're not sure if it was from a power surge or something else, but they were not replaceable. Vaccine refrigerators are quite expensive compared to your commercial, I mean, to your residential. These vaccine refrigerators have to be earmarked to be for vaccine or medical use only with a, the way that they work is the leeway and the refrigeration temperature can be no more than two degrees above or below. And they, they cost at least over $1,000 apiece. And so a couple of things happened in 2022. We were not able to have our own vaccine clinic in the Town of Wenham because we had no refrigerator in which to hold the flu vaccine. So every year we do vaccine, flu vaccine share with the Town of Hamilton and they've been very accommodating. And so they actually hosted our town clinic at their Hamilton COA. But from that, they actually get all the revenue from the flu vaccine. We did not generate any revenue this year. Typically for the flu vaccine clinics, we get reimbursed from insurances, we get reimbursed a little bit slightly more than the cost of the vaccine because we, they cover an administration fee, which is for the time and effort for administering the vaccine and overheads related to that. So we had no revenue this year. The second part is, part of our emergency preparedness plan is that we need to have the ability to maintain and deliver any type of emergency medical treatment in case of an epidemic or pandemic, which obviously we saw we had. And vaccinations is one of those possibilities which require either refrigeration or freezer. So if an emergency were to occur, we cannot actually do anything in our preparedness plan, which is a problem. And then lastly, we are actually the backup site for Hamilton. If their vaccine refrigerator or freezer fails, they would then shift it to us. So we cannot do that right now. In fact, Hamilton, I was able to arrange for Hamilton to come to Middleton to where I work as their backup right now because we don't have any functional refrigerator or freezer. So you see that our request is for 2442. I would actually request if we can add $600 more dollars in order to get the correct sizing and cost for both a freezer and a refrigerator.
Thank you, Dr. Tang. Any questions from the Select Board or FinCom? So perhaps, Dr. Tang, can you just explain how important this was at the start of the pandemic to have that capability in town? Because as I understand, it's not just for flus, but if any new strain comes along, COVID or some other variant, that we are tasked as a town to provide that service on an emergency basis?
Yeah, so fortunately during the heart of the pandemic, we had these, the COVID vaccines, remember at Pinky Park? And we were able to do that because we had a freezer that could store the Moderna vaccine. The Pfizer vaccine requires a more specialized freezer, which is minus 70 degrees. Fortunately, the shipping containers in which it came in allowed it to be stored in there for at least two weeks because it was on dry ice. A negative 70 Celsius freezer would be too expensive and not used as much. And they have one in Hamilton. And since we're part of the GCAC, the Greater K Band, for COVID, we don't need to have that, but we really need to have the refrigerator and freezer so that we can do things like the COVID vaccine clinic, flu clinics. And again, for any pandemic in the future, if it requires a vaccine, those are the two methodologies in which they're stored. There was never a vaccine stored at room tub. Everything is either refrigerated or freezer. And they have to be kept within a small margin for the recommendations that we follow from the CDC and the MassDPH. So it's important that we have these things functioning actually, that we have them in general. So again, the flu clinics won't start till September of this year, so the need is as soon as we can get them, but definitely by before September would be the need.
Thank you, Dr. Tang. Any questions from the Select Board?
No, I thought we needed.
We need it.
Dr. Tang, it's, thank you very much, Dr. Tang. It's Jim Purdy, Chair of the Finance Committee. Could you just repeat the projected cost for the freezer refrigerators, please?
So looking, if you look at for a medical-grade vaccine, it's roughly $3,000 total for both the freezer and the refrigerator. Right now, we have 2442 allocated and I'm asking for, you know, $560 to get us to 3,000. Give us the opportunity to work with vendors and choose the correct brand and models.
Right. Steve, was that, I remember discussions about the freezer and refrigerator. Was that incorporated into the expenses or am I?
No, that's incorporated, no, you're correct, it's incorporated into the expenses and some of the questions from the Finance Committee were more operational in direct services that they provide through the pandemic and also currently as far as health inspections and things like that.
Right. So within the, what I have, Dr. Tang, is for overall expenses, a $22,000 expense line projected for FY '24. And as Steve indicated, that 3,000 of that, Steve, is incorporated into that 22,000. I just wanted to be clear about that for myself.
Well, as of right now, I think it's 2640 and then we're adding 500 to it.
Oh, I have.
So Jim, I can, I'll get you all for the next meeting, I'll get, I'll update that.
Okay, okay, very good.
I'll add the 500 and I'll make sure Dr. Tang is okay with the total dollar amount and then we'll get it to the Finance Committee.
I guess a question for the Finance Committee, I don't know if there's any more ARPA funds left, but vaccine refrigerators may possibly fall under that category if there's any more COVID monies?
Mm-hmm.
So I would also look at that if those are available or still left.
So I think.
Rest with the Select Board.
Yeah, so we can, I think, move on. Diane's got a question here.
I just have a question for you.
But essentially, this is, you know, $500, $600 and millions and millions of dollars, we'll get it done.
In the budget, yes. But if so, if this goes in the budget and is approved, the money's not available till July, is it possible to get these refrigerators or freezers between July and September?
Yes, usually the turnaround time at this point, because we're not in the heart of the pandemic where they were, everyone was ordering them, takes about two to three weeks from the time of order.
Okay, so it'll work, yeah.
So I don't think, we'll have enough time.
Okay, that was just my concern.
Yeah, and I've reached out to several vendors to see accommodation, one, if they discount from municipalities. And someone also told me that Hamilton had worked with Granger and getting theirs and they may have some. getting theirs and they may have some kind of, uh, a deal with municipalities. So I'll check those out, too.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ting.
You're welcome.
All right.
Just, just one more. Just one more question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, Dr. Ting, where, where would you recommend that the freezer refrigerator be stored and maintained?
So they, they have to have continuous power. So they were over at the police station, uh, where they have a backup generator, um, and then, um, the public health nurse, public, uh, Mary Beth Ting had access to it. We, it would, the state requires us to do daily temperature readings or, I'm sorry. It, it, it has to maintain daily temperatures, which we report on a regular basis. So, uh, it has to be accessible and it has to be on an emergency backup generator.
Okay. Steve, is that within the, um, renovations, uh, uh, interior renovations, the police station? Has that been accounted for, that a freezer or refrigerator be maintained there? I remember a discussion about that as well in the past.
Well, they, they currently located, well, the units that don't work are currently located there. So I think the expectation would be that the new units would be located there. I know the police had, um, expressed some interest in moving them out of there so they could utilize the space. But, uh, we're told that, you know, really that's, that's where they need to be due to the emergency power. Uh, to the extent there's a better, there's a better spot in town there maybe, but, and we'll continue to look in it. But, you know, we'll make sure that they have a spot in the police station if that's where they need to be.
Yeah, and, and just to, to follow up on that, there are some, uh, you know, ramifications we can talk offline relative to the, um, the specifics of, um, CEGIT's requirements and accreditation requirements as far as, um, you know, checking on them and, um, they, we, we can talk offline about that just cause it's not the proper form for it, but it's, it's definitely something we can discuss.
All right.
Thank you.
Very well. So, uh, as police is here, next, do we want to speak?
Can I, can I, excuse me, Gary?
Yes.
Can I just ask the Finance Committee if there's anyone in the Finance Committee for any further comments or questions? Does this have come up from a few of the, uh, operations, uh, cost regarding operations and so on? Are there any other questions in the Finance Committee?
Yeah, just a comment. I did want to thank, uh, Dr. Ting for joining us tonight. Your introductory comments, they cut to the, the heart of the question I raised, which was whether, uh, hospitals and drugstores are better positioned to administer, uh, vaccines than the town would be not knowing, you know, about this emergency and the requirement that, um, we seem to be, uh, yeah, needing to meet. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments or questions from the, uh, Finance Committee? Thanks very much, Dr. Ting and the Board of Health for being here. I appreciate it. It's, it's helpful to the Finance Committee.
Take care.
Thank you. All right, uh, Steve, you want to introduce the, uh, the police budget item?
Yeah, so up next, we have, um, Police Chief Denapoli. It looks like the Deputy Chief is, is also here, Deputy Chief Luca Tony. And I believe they're, they're just gonna go high level, not granularity on, I know the, the police and the fire budget. Both boards have expressed some interest into hearing more about, uh, the staffing plans where the two departments adding, um, uh, full-time equivalent. So I figured to give the, the chiefs the opportunity to just go high level on their, you know, personnel plan, uh, that they're asking for the FY twenty-four budget to fund.
So Chief Denapoli, why don't you, uh, go first, please?
Uh, sure. We had, uh, discussed before when speaking with Steve, just to kind of, you know, answer any questions that are relevant to what our plan is. It's already noted and it's been brought up at, uh, uh, other sessions. We're looking for that additional, uh, twelve full-time officer. Uh, and looking at the numbers, I ran the numbers today with, with the deputy, just looking at this past year, just to give an overall understanding of, uh, the, the difference that it would make. This past year, uh, we, we ran the numbers on the total, uh, reserve shifts that were worked and it came out to four hundred and forty-two. Uh, Reserve Officer Brian Pratt did a really nice job breaking down all these numbers for us. Um, and i- in that, that, that equals three hundred, uh, excuse me, three thousand five hundred thirty-six hours. And an average full-time officer, based on a, on a forty-hour work, we've got a forty-two schedule, it's, uh, two thousand and eighty hours. So it would be two thousand and eighty hours, if you will, um, roughly moved over from reserve officers working to one full-time officer working. Great. The first year, uh, could be different based on, uh, whether they're certified or not, uh, time, time and date that they're hired, if they're away at a police academy. So the first year, there's gonna be some, certainly some jockeying around, uh, because of those different areas that exist, whether they're up and ready to go right away or depending on if they're not certified and if they're not when the next academy is, academy is available. So that could be, uh, several month difference that could certainly still require, um, reserve officers working uh, quite a bit until we're up to full staff. Uh, so that, that could have a, a big, uh, certainly a big difference on that, big ramifications on that. So we bring it down to roughly fifteen hundred hours if we went by the hours that were worked this past year for reserve officers. We'd bring it down to that from thirty-five hundred hours. Um, we, as already noted, uh, what was brought up, uh, we are still in active union negotiations. So, um, those numbers are still fluid and we were hoping, uh, to get to where we need to be sooner rather than later, but I just can't speak to that yet. So those numbers have been kind of infixed during this whole budget season. Uh, just for the main reason that I don't have anything tangible that I can, that I can give to that. Um, we're, we're certainly hoping to get there soon. Um, and I can, I can definitely answer any questions relative to what our goals are or, or anything about that.
Thank you, Chief. So we've, uh, gone over the police budget before, but Jim, anybody on your committee have any further questions?
Uh, FinCom, any further questions about Chief Denapoli's budget, operations or staffing? So I, I think the chief in the past has also done a, a, a very good job of describing the reduction of reserve officers to absorb the cost of this FTE going forward, even though it will be an incremental process, uh, throughout the fiscal year twenty-four. Oh, Chief, I do have one question. I, I assume that this is going to, uh, uh, be beneficial to our ongoing accreditation by the, by the police, uh, process that you go through?
Yeah, it certainly will. It makes, it makes a big difference with that and, uh, you know, it's, it's a huge undertaking, the year that we're currently in with our accreditation onsite coming up, uh, in October. Deputy Chief Luca Tony's been, uh, working some, some pretty hot hours with his head in the files. And this, uh, this will be a part of that. It certainly makes it easier for, for training, um, for what's, what's involved with that, uh, without a doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Diane, Peter, any questions?
So Chief, um, moving, moving, um, to a full-time and less reserve hours, that's obviously for more safety for the town, but, um, and I guess it probably is a money savings at some point, generally incrementally, as Jim said.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're moving, we're certainly this first year, like I said, it's, it's, it's certainly gonna be difficult to pinpoint that because there's just so many uncertainties, uh, as we, as we get started on it. But, uh, you, you know, it, it, it's something that, as, as mentioned and brought up before, um, that, that commitment, uh, is, is more effective, safer policing in that, again, I, I, I say this a lot and I know I, I repeat myself, but it's so important to note that it, it, it is not a negative on the reserve officers that have helped this agency function for a very long time and, and we would be lost without it, without that. I mean, they're risking their lives just like our full-time officers, but like I've always said, it's more effective, it's more productive and it's more safer policing to, uh, for folks to commit their, their livelihood and their life to it. It, it's a, now more than ever, as we all know, it's, it's very, very difficult to, to wear that uniform in the back. Every day we see something new and that full-time commitment, uh, for training, for frequency, uh, it's the skills, um, to, so those skills don't have to be to, to do that, you know, forty-some odd hours a week as opposed to maybe eight, eight or sixteen hours in a whole month is, is a monumental difference of, of staying proficient and, um, and up to date on, on the skills that are gonna keep each officer safe and certainly the citizens.
And, um, wasn't there a reserve, reserve policeman academy that we had to pay for? Is that just for all, um, police officers?
So, so the Bridge Academy, uh, yeah, we're still in the process of doing that now, um, for this second year. It's geared over that three-year period where every reserve officer in the state to maintain their police certification as a reserve officer has to complete those mandated additional hours of training. And we have three officers now that have been actively going through it, working their butts off to get it done. Uh, and so, yeah, that's still, that's continuing and that's the commitment that we've made to them and the word I gave them that I would get them through it if they were willing to go through it. And, and we stand by that because they're still gonna be needed and, uh, a big part of the agency to assist us, um, as we, as we strive to that period. Cause we're not, we can't be, even with this twelve officer, uh, w- we, we don't have to cover for, for training and for vacation and sick time and other reasons why officers aren't here. We're just not to that point where we can be a full-time only police department. We, we, we are not there yet.
Right, but so if we have less reserve officers, we'll have less officers going through the Bridge Academy, perhaps? Not next year or the year after, and then that would be a savings.
We budgeted this year for all the officers that, uh, based on the alphabet of their last names, how they do it. We budgeted for all of them and certainly for next year, uh, as well. And then after June thirtieth of next year, so that would be June thirtieth of twenty-four, that Bridge Academy is no more. So there would not be any more after that, uh, for, a- anywhere in the state.
So it's not a savings.
If they don't have Bridge by then.
Okay. I thought maybe it would be a savings, but it doesn't sound like it, so, never mind. Thank you.
Not at this point.
Okay.
Right. So we also have, uh, Fire Assistant Chief?
Deputy Fire Chief Baxter, it looks like he's here. If you want to speak to the, uh, fire budget, Jeff?
Absolutely. Um, so, starting with, we are asking for a full-time employee. Um, we, we are trying to, or we have brought, taken it out of our budget, probably eighty percent to eighty-five percent. We found it within our budget, cause we did have a couple vacant positions in there to bring together. Um, we are hoping to get a, another fully trained firefighter, one-two certified person and EMT to bring them on during the daytime hours. Um, we are short during the daytime hours a lot because people have to go further for their work and with the call department, it would be a huge bonus to us as myself and the other full-time firefighter. We do work four ten-hour days, trying to give more coverage to the town that way. But it is leaving two of the days during the week that there is only the chief himself with myself or on the other day, it's just the chief and the firefighter. Um, so it's getting harder to get the trucks out the door, um, some days. And so just to move along, the, with the EMS side, but also you always do need two EMTs. And as when we transport to the hospital, that's leaving the town with no coverage on those days. Um, I did run the numbers for the past three years as of today. So for twenty-two, twenty-one and twenty, each year has gone up between ten to twenty percent in our call volume also. So not only do we have more people work demands and everything like that, but our call volume is going up at the same time. Um, which beats a longer day doing paperwork and just everything else. Cause when an emergency comes in, we are all leaving the building and the paperwork just stays there. We can't always get to it all. So that's one of the bigger parts in the salary portion.
Let me interrupt for a second then. So Jim, do you have, uh, are your committee members have any questions on the, uh, personnel ad then?
Any, any questions on that added position this Jeff outlined? So that position, full-time equivalent, Jeff, is, is approximately, what, I, I, I don't have the detail of, fifty-five thousand? Fifty-four thousand? Is that right?
Yeah, it would be in the fifty-four thousand area. It's leaving what we found within our budget, just leaving a, um, balance of fifteen to ninety-two to finance through the town budget.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was interested in, Frank. That's a, that's a, a very good way to approach this. It's similar to, uh, what the other departments have done, uh, to address that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else from your, uh, committee, Jim?
Any other questions, Jeff?
Can we spend a, can we spend a couple minutes on the equipment or?
Yeah, I think we're gonna go to that, the, the capital equipment or request. Yeah, that'll be, I'm sure that'll be coming up. Yeah.
All right. So just a minute then. So any questions from Peter or Diane on the, uh, police firefighter ad?
I don't, no.
All right, so, uh, let's, uh, go to the equipment, particularly the, the radios, or is there other questions as well?
Yeah, I figured, you know, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on capital on this, but I, I thought I would go over some of the recent changes that were brought to our attention. And, um, really, three, three, three major changes to the capital improvement plan that's been circulated, uh, a few times over the last four or five weeks. And that's the, after, um, you know, looking more closely and talking with Mike Hardy, our, uh, facilities manager. We think that the, uh, the police roof is in, is in good shape, although it's coming up towards its life expectancy. We feel like we got another good five years in it. So we're, um, would be looking to remove that from the debt exclusion, so that's a reduction of a hundred thousand dollars. Additionally, we were originally earmarking, uh, the entire cost of finishing West Wyndham Park at approximately five hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, after talking with Ernst and the, the commission, they think that they can base, if, you know, the money that they're getting from ARPA plus, uh, anticipation of some funds from the CPC, that they can, uh, complete the project to, you know, a, a level that they're satisfied with for an additional two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So that would come, that five hundred thousand dollar would be, would be, would be a reduction and, uh, to two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars as a standalone article to fund, um, West Wyndham Park through it, through a debt exclusion. And the third change is related to the police. So they have, uh, gotten word that the payouts, or at least the grant process is so far behind that they're just.
Fire.
Oh, excuse me, it's fire, I'm sorry. They, they just, they, that for their mobile, uh, communication radios, there's that grant process that they're getting involved in, uh, I believe it was this month. But they also found out that the results of prior years, the same grant that runs annually, they're a number of years backlog in releasing the, uh, recipients of these grants. So there is a critical need for these radios, so we're now proposing that we fund, uh, through a debt exclusion, the purchase of fifteen mobile units that will get the fire by and still participate in the grant program. So the remainder of the, the communication needs would hopefully be funded through the grant. And that reduces our grant match from thirty thousand dollars, which is a free cash, uh, item to twenty thousand dollars. It's ten percent of the anticipated grant amount that we need to, uh, appropriate to qualify for the grant.
So Deputy Chief, you want to speak to, uh, the radio need?
So what we're proposing, what Steve was just going over is we do need to have communication with, within our town with other departments and mutually. Uh, right now, everything's changing so much and so quickly. The current radios that we are using are from a grant in from two thousand and four. And because of the age of the radios, we can no longer program those. My last XP computer, so that tells you how old they were, is, just recently died. And that is the only software that we could reprogram the radios with. Motorola hasn't moved forward. They just discontinued the use of those. So to be able to move forward, we're proposing to be able to buy fifteen. So to be able to move forward, we're proposing to be able to buy 15 portables is what I would call is a Band-Aid until we can get either A, results back from the grant, which all the paperwork and everything has to be in by the ninth. Um, and again, they're, they're just giving results out right now for a grant from 2020, as Steve alluded to. Um, so what we're hoping to do is be able to purchase 15 portables to get our communication needs at least in a safer position and still be applying for the $209,000 needed for the balance of radios for the vehicles on station and whatnot and all the equipment to install them.
Thank you. Any questions, Jim, from your, uh, committee?
FinCom, folks, any thoughts or questions regarding the new request for 53,000 for 15 units?
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, uh, I'm just trying to do the, do the math here. So the, the ask is 15 radios now, uh, and then 18 in the future. So that's 33 radios, but those all be deployed? It seems like a lot of radios.
It's actually, um, what you're not seeing is the second part in the grant, which is the $209,000 grant, which we're moving forward with. That would include 10 mobiles for the trucks. That also includes the antenna because they're dual or multi-brand for each of the mobiles. And then that will, we will need a balance of, um, 15 to 18 radios for portables. So each guy would have a portable radio, each guy or a girl, sorry. So that's where the balance of the radios do belong.
So the grant radios, that if I, just so I can understand this, Jeff?
Yeah.
Are, are, are attached to equipment radios. They aren't as, they aren't the portable. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yep, so when I say the 10 mobile radios, that, those are, those are hardwired in the vehicles and require some other equipment and stuff to actually put them in the radios, mount them properly, have them operate properly.
Yes, I still don't follow. We, we have one, we have one memo here that reads, requesting to buy 15 portables now.
That's correct.
And the other, uh, letter, uh, describes replacing 18 portables and it, uh, 10 base radios.
That's correct.
So there's 33 portable radios, 10 base radios.
Correct.
And you can employ 33 portable radios?
Yes, each person is issued a radio in the department.
Hmm, so they carry that with them at all times and then on call they have that in their vehicle when they show up to the firehouse? Is that the way that?
So our rule of thumb is if you're responding from your house and you pass the scene, you're asked to stop at the scene. Anybody that's coming from the station again, you're coming on the truck, but you're still showing up, you're grabbing your fire gear, your radio's going to be in your gear and what, any other personal equipment you may need. So when you do go in to fight a fire or you're on a emergency medical, you do have a personal radio, either if you get in trouble or give back to command anything that you may see within a dwelling or a fire.
Anything else from your committee, Jim?
So these, uh, just, I, I, I'm, I'm also reading the two, uh, documents that Steve sent out today. And I think that that kind of has raised some, some questions because in the initial portable and mobile radio replacement, it does, the budget, as Jeff Calder has mentioned, replace 18, uh, portables and 10, and 10 base. And then this second note sounds like, um, it sa, it, it sounds like this is an, an immediate request that's needed.
Exfil of 15.
That, that's right. No, I understa, yep, I got, I got that, Jeff. Um, but it, the, the question of 15 plus 18, I guess, is, is, is the question. These, these 15 radios have, I, there's a note here, I think I'm reading it right, has a 20-year, uh, uh, life? Is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, we're hoping to get about the same amount. I mean, we've gotten almost 20 years out of the current radios.
And, and how many, how many, uh, total staff do we have who are on call? We, we'll have, uh, four, four full-time FTEs now if the budget passes, is that right?
You have four, correct, and?
Right, and how many, how many on-call folks do we have at current?
We'll, we'll have a total of 33 personnel.
Okay, so, so we'll have 29 FTE, uh, we'll have 29 call folks?
That's correct, yes.
And then just the last question from me, uh, that these are rather expensive radios. Uh, just curious about where they're sourced, do they have a competitive bid? Where do these things come from? They're $3,500 a radio. As I do the math, it looks like the base, uh, radios are 14,000 apiece.
Um, that's not completely right because there are accessories. So for the portable radios, we get a bank, actually two banks, uh, with 18 batteries. So with the 18 batteries, we have, um, two banks that would be kept in the station to be, uh, constantly charging. So the only ones that will be getting actual base charges would be all the officers.
Okay, so the next question just is, how are they sourced? Is it competitive bid?
Uh, this, we buy from the state bid list. And just getting back to your other question, there's also antennas and whatnot, um, in the price. So that's why, uh, you don't see all those numbers. But we do have quite an extensive quote of other equipment that does have to be purchased to make these, uh, viable in the vehicles.
I see, okay.
And Jeff, just for, Jeff, just for clarification, that when he's, the state bid list is, the state is essentially gone through a competitive process to establish vendors on a list, the state bid list, that allows us to purchase these materials through without, uh, adhering to 30B, which is the procurement law in the state of Massachusetts. So it's kind of, it, it cuts out having to go through the open and competitive process for the communities because the state has already done it for us.
Any other questions from the Finance Committee regarding the, uh, the fire department staffing? Uh, that Jeff has described, the additional position? Uh, or the, uh, the discussion regarding the portable radios and the base radios in the grant?
If not, anything Diane or Peter? All right, so as we understand, the radios are essential. You know, the old ones are making it so that we are incompatible with neighboring towns and fire departments and could not actually talk to other fire trucks coming to our assistance. So I see this as, uh, essential for our safety. All right, so, uh, thank you, police, fire, and, uh?
Health.
We got the three, uh, of the, uh, subcategories figured out. Anything else you want to work budget-wise, Steve?
No, I just wanted to have this open forum so that the two boards could have, uh, public discussion on any budgetary concerns, uh, get further questions answered. And, uh, do you want me to talk about timeline?
Yeah, so, uh, before, uh, FinCom adjourns, we need to review the, uh, rest of the budget cycle here.
Yeah, so there's a few things that need to get done between now and the 21st. Um, so all the financial, financially impact, impacted articles, so articles that have to do with money, need to be voted on by the Finance Committee. Those articles include the capital, the capital plan, uh, late bills, the, um, perpetual care transfer from, um, the sale lots for the cemetery, the budget artic, the budget. So what I'm proposing is that if the FinCom could meet on the 15th, I know that was brought up as a possibility at the last meeting, I can, between now and then, put together the draft warrant articles, including the numbers, based on what the FinCom has heard thus far and voted, um, through the prior meetings. And then we'll be able to, uh, to include the Board of Health now that you've heard from Dr. Ting. And we'll also, by then, should have final numbers for, those finals we can get for the, uh, Salary Reserve as well as Maya and the final determination on what direction we're going to go with the Rec Department. So those are really the, the three pieces that will fall into place. And the Finance Committee on the 15th will be able to vote in support or not for that, in the, the votes that traditionally appear at the bottom of each warrant article where it shows the Finance Committee and the Select Board and the votes in support for the town meeting, uh, voters to see. And then at that point, well, then the, the final piece will be this, this, on the 16th, the CPC will be taking their final votes. And then on the 21st, all of that will be rolled together and presented to the Select Board. And, um, I'll leave it up to those boards if you want it. That one could also be a joint if they wanted some more discussion. But everything will be rolled up and the final votes of support or not supportive by the Select Board will be taken, um, under the recommendation of the Finance Committee on the 21st. And then we will go to the printer at the end of the following week for a town meeting warrant.
And we could just add in too, the school, final numbers coming on the 9th, right?
Yep, on the 9th, school, just, yeah. So we mentioned, uh, during my announcements, on the 9th, the school was, that's, that's a big, that's a big one to forget, right? It's half our budget, but yeah, so we'll know the, the final, we have, we have basically the final numbers. Uh, um, these members on both boards have been involved in, uh, the school committee, uh, budget process. And, you know, I, I think that the number, the final number will not be more than what's been presented. There is some hope that there may be a slight, an additional slight reduction, but that, uh, we'll know on Thursday.
So Jim, I think the question is, uh, you have a meeting on the 15th and get everything wrapped up?
Right, can I just ask a question, Gary, before we get that, okay? So, uh, the CPC is meeting, are they, on the 8th, is that correct?
Presentation, spot their vote, the critical date is the 16th, is where they're going to decide.
So they're going to vote on the 16th after, a day after our Wednesday, the 15th meeting, right?
Yes.
So we, we, we will hold, uh, we will hold in, uh, abe, advance, if you will, any potential changes from the CPC vote until the 21st? Is that fair to say, Steve?
Yeah, the only, yeah, the only one impact, the only piece that would be impacted at, that I can anticipate at this point is the West Wenham Park, which is a standalone article. So that will be easy to, you know, you could easily take the vote on Wednesday at the 2:55. And if the CPC decides to fund more than that, uh, we can amend the vote on the 21st. But that, it's got, that piece is kind of, is removed from the capital improvement. Uh, the rest of the program, it'll be a standalone warrant article.
But are other requests to CPC, if I understand it correctly, are off the table?
That's correct. They voted to not fund or even entertain the applications.
Okay, uh, FinCom, uh, getting to your question, Gary. Uh, FinCom, uh, are the members that are present tonight available? I am assuming that's a 6:30, uh, Zoom meeting that we would have, Steve?
Correct.
Uh, okay. Uh, are the members that are present this evening available for the 15th at 6, 6:30, a week from tomorrow?
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm available?
Yes.
Okay, and Audrey, did you say yes, I think, Audrey, first?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, we can go forward with that, Steve, and, uh, and walk through those warrant articles. And could we have a copy of the warrant articles at least a day in advance before the meeting? Is that possible?
Yep, that's possible. We'll definitely have them.
So everyone can take a look at them and, and think about it? And just for the new members of the, uh, Finance Committee, just so you know, uh, what we typically do is I will assign two of the Finance Committee members the reading of that, a particular article at the town meeting. Just, I bet we can talk about that later, but I just want to give you a heads up that that's the process that typically follows that town meeting. So we can continue.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead, Jeff, yeah.
That didn't mean to interrupt. Uh, a question for Steve, if I could. The capital plan that was distributed earlier this afternoon indicates, uh, $569,000 in, in borrowing, uh, just, uh, yeah, from my, my application. How is that borrowed? Is that a loan, is it a bond? Uh, and as I look at the, uh, summary of expenses, uh, I don't see from 2023, fiscal year 2024, uh, any change in, uh, debt exclusion expense line item. Uh, I'm just, I'm curious how that extra borrowing, uh, would, uh, work in the budget?
Yep, so the, the debt exclusion piece that you're looking at, so the revenue side and the expenditure side have, has offsetting entries. So the, the debt exclusion piece is, is a wash on the bottom line. And it's held constant going forward year, year to year at this point. And we'll likely, we will have final numbers by next Wednesday as we're going through our excluded debt service. So that's service, that's debt payments on the, that's debt payments that the town needs to make that have been excluded from the tax levy in prior years. And the, also the variable to that is, once we get, you know, w- once we get the authorization to move forward with the borrowing as presented, um, the five, the five, six, nine, the timing of those wa, is going to dictate what piece will be exempt and how much in year one, two, and three. So generally, you have short-term borrowings of a year or less to get the projects going and to fund essentially cash flow until the, you know, the project is end of, fully underway. And then you'll issue a long-term debt, uh, security to the market and fund the rest of it through that.
So the town has a line of credit, uh, of some sort, in which it can draw for the initial?
Yeah, well, it's all, I know, it's all, yeah, well, it's called a bond anticipation note. So it's, it's an actual note and it's sold in the market. The people looking for, you know, AAA-rated, um, communities. And they'll, they'll buy that as an investment. And the same with the, the bond, we go out, you know, some of these projects, I don't think anything here will go up to 30 years. But, you know, if you're building a new school, you go out 30 years and you have, uh, institutional investors like Credit Suisse First Boston that wants to buy. You know, they'll, they'll underwrite the bond and sell it on the primary market and then get sold on the secondary market.
Even in these small dollar notes?
Yeah, well, this could get, yeah, I mean, you will have these small bonds, yep. I mean, we'll, we'll try to consolidate as much as possible, but yeah, there are some small bonds out there. And it probably limits the, the, the interest, but, you know, anyways, from a couple hundred thousand to, you know, a couple hundred million.
Okay, uh, so what, so the, this is, this, the financial pieces of the budget and the ca, operations and capital will be incorporated into the, uh, warrant articles, correct, Steve?
Yes, they'll be incorporated, yep. They'll be incorporated. So what you'll see on Wednesday or Tuesday in an email will?
Wednesday, or Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, will be what they will look like, uh, at town meeting.
Right. And so we'll have an opportunity one more time, uh, to discuss, uh, to discuss each one of these articles and further clarify any questions, uh, if required.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
So Jim, your committee's all set to meet on the 15th then, and, uh? And, uh, whenever you're ready to adjourn, we'll move on.
The fifteenth and the twenty-first, as I understand it.
Yes.
I hear a motion from the Finance Committee needing to adjourn at, uh, eight, uh, let's call it eight fifty.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment, I, Jim?
I, Deirdre.
Thanks, God.
Hi, Jeff. Thank you, Finance Committee, appreciate your, but, thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Steve. Appreciate your involvement.
Of course.
And clarification. Thank you, thank you, Jer, uh, Gary.
Thank you, Jim.
For us.
All right. All right, back to item F then. As we'll move through these things.
It's hard to keep these papers straight.
So item F, uh-
Warrant articles.
Warrant articles. So I think the easiest way is, these do not include the final numbers yet. But these are the forms, and then we'll go through the warrant articles to say, yes, we want these articles. And then we'll have the second round of making sure we have the sequence in agreement. And then the third step will be to close the warrant.
Question, then, so I, I like it better than the one we got the other day, so it has nothing in it. Um, but the titles are going to be as they, are, are written as they're going to be written on the warrant?
So close.
Close.
Each of these have to go to KP Law for-
And they do the titles as well?
Yeah, they do the titles, the, the whole format, right?
So it's like legally, legally, it's not, not English.
But this is the, I guess, the-
The general idea.
The intent of the article is to-
Yes, okay.
So what we'll need is, um, if, any questions on any of these as we go through, we can stop. But otherwise, we can step through with the motions.
Can't we do them all, the motion kind of all the end, just go through them all first?
I think so, but, um-
And the, well, the, you know, move to, make, make the motion and say, you know, Article One to elect Article Two, and then just go through and read them off individually.
So why would take? Let's go through the articles, one by one, and go for any questions quick. And then we'll make the one big motion, all right? So, any questions on number one?
What does, what, what is ATM?
Annual Town Meeting. So because we do not have a current elected town clerk, like the last time, we have to have a one-day town clerk elected from the body at the meeting.
Okay.
So that's Article One.
It's different than last year though, because we do have an appointed clerk for a period of time. Does that make any difference?
No, because we got to have a registered citizen from the town.
We had an appointed then too, but that's what, Pat was also there, but, yeah.
Okay, all right, yep, all right. I didn't know if it was different because she'd been appointed, I don't remember if she had been appointed already.
To, to preside over the town meeting, it needs to be a registered voter and a resident of the town of Wenham.
And so are we looking for people to do that now? Okay, thank you.
But they could come from the floor too.
Yep.
All right, all right, Article Two, um, sponsored by the moderator. Essentially wants an up or down vote as to how we're going to go at the meeting and all future meetings. Clickers or no clickers? Clickers or science?
Why does it have to be primary?
Well, because if the clickers fail, the backup would be-
So why can't you use it as a voting method, not primary? Is that how, so this, and my first question was, is Roger aware of that? And he-
Yeah, so we had a meeting, and I think the, the concern was that the town of Wenham has a history of, uh, you know, open vote, open voting, so that, you know, you know what your neighbor's voting and vice versa. Then we did implement the electronic voting a number of years ago. And I think it worked well, but there was some, um, some concern with the way the votes were displayed on the screen.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't do it right.
And it was then abandoned and went back to the, uh, voting tags. And I think it's the moderators and, uh, Roger, feel free to jump in if, if you want to add anything. But I think his concern is that, you know, we don't want to force anything on the meeting that, you know, a voting method that they don't like, so that if they want, if, if the meeting's appetite is to vote with the electronic clickers, that that is the primary vote. So that's what we use every article to be consistent going forward, unless there's a failure with the technology, and then we have our backup voting method.
I just wondered if Roger wanted to speak, okay.
All right. Number three, any questions? That's the, currently, we have a cap on the program.
Of numbers of participants?
No, of, of money, fifteen thousand. So, uh, this will remove the cap and we'll leave it to, uh, Jim and the town administrator to, uh, determine how many realistic slots we can utilize that year within the effort.
Yep.
Right, number four is, uh, to put the property tax exemptions up to the state limits, right?
Yep, so it's, right, well, we're at the state limit now, but it allows us a local option to double that.
I think it's fifty-one, chapter fifty-one.
Chapter fifty-nine, five C and a half.
Chapter fifty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's section five C and a half.
Okay.
Number five is to, uh, move exemptions and deferrals up to the maximum allowed by law. And especially on the deferrals, we'll change from a, um, dollar figure to the state law allowed reliance on the state tax circuit breaker. So the Department of Revenue adjusts the circuit breaker. And so that will reference the circuit breaker rather than a fixed number that we'd have to go back to every year.
So those three articles are articles that we're bringing in to try to alleviate some of the tax pains that people are feeling now.
Yes.
So it's doing what we can do, mhm.
Correct.
Good.
Next, uh, set. Number six is the annual town budget. Number seven is the, uh, free cash portion of the capital improvement plan. Eight is to pay any prior bills that spilled over beyond the fiscal year. Number nine is, uh, the standby amount if needed, depending on how collective bargaining comes out.
Those are with the union negotiations that might not finish up. This is how we're going to try to fund it if we need to, yep.
That might, you know, not finish up by the time we got to go to print. Number ten is, years ago, Hamilton had set aside in their stabilization fund five hundred thousand dollars for the specific purpose of the athletic fields contingent upon Wenham producing fair share, which we estimate at two hundred and fifty thousand. So this will be the first of-
Oh, sneaky.
Separate athletic field funding efforts. Yes, any questions on those, as we go?
That would be from free cash, is that where that came from?
Yeah, so free cash, and if you want to, so currently, while we're on it, we can say the, uh, the athletic fields have money possibilities in front of both CPCs. They have this money, they have the stabilization fund within the school budget. And then we're awaiting final word on the ninth as the actual dollar amount in their debt exclusion.
Yep.
Figure, which-
Yeah, we're estimating at fifteen million, but-
Fifteen million. So you have, uh, an ask for eight hundred thousand and eight hundred thousand Hamilton-Wenham CPCs, five hundred and two fifty here, one point six million in the stabilization fund, and fifteen million in the, uh, separate article for debt exclusion. All right. Next set then. So, uh, number eleven is acceptance by the town of, uh, the interest in earnings on the cemetery and other trust funds. Article twelve is the cemetery sale of lots fund, which year, last year, we changed to put it into the perpetual care so that we can eventually get the cemetery expenditures out for under the two and a half percent cap. And as required by law, provide perpetual care to the cemeteries. So, uh, the Cemetery Commission meets tomorrow at noon to validate the number they're requesting. But this is the article that will make the transfer at town meeting. Thirteen is the normal water operating budget to capital reserve. Fourteen is, uh, yes, we want the, uh, road money from the state. Number fifteen is the CPA reservations appropriations. And that will come from the decisions on the sixteenth, the CPC meeting.
Won't the FinCom have to vote on those as well, even though?
They, they make a recommendation.
They make a recommendation, but they don't have to do that at their meeting?
No, so, and in fact, they could join us on the twenty-first if they want to get their recommendation out of the way.
Would be good.
The sixteenth is the debt exclusion to fund West Wenham Park. And the, uh, Open Space and Rec has adjusted the, those figures.
Yeah.
But, but is also contingent upon what might happen at CPC as well. And their total is a, uh, drawdown slightly in the design, so essentially, whatever money they get is how far in the total project they'll be able to get done. Uh, seventeen is the debt exclusion for the town capital improvements. Eighteen is the, uh, anticipated fifteen or whatever figure to come up with on the ninth for the school fields debt exclusion. Nineteen is the, uh, town-sponsored change of the town clerk position from elected to appointed. Number twenty is a citizen's petition related to the town clerks. And then twenty-one is the election of officers.
So-
Questions on that?
Yep. I'd like to see what we're going to propose as far as changing the elected to appointed. And I'd like to see the citizen's petition on the same thing, I didn't know about that.
But yeah, just came in.
Might have just come in.
Petition came in this afternoon.
Just came in today.
Yeah.
But yeah, whatever, how we, how, what, what are we proposing to do? And it seems to me if we're proposing what they're proposing, then we don't need both articles. We could come to them and ask them not, but I, we, I don't know how, how you want to-
The issue is, the last minute article here, the citizen's petition, still has to go to KP Law to make sure it's valid. As, you know, in past years, we've had petitions that were-
Right.
End up invalid. So if we want to go forward with our petition, then with our article, then we need to get it on the warrant. And then in town meeting, if they are essentially the same, then the moderator would bring up number nineteen.
Yeah, and then-
And then if there's positive vote there, then-
I'll see it after.
Twenty would become you.
Right, okay. So when will we, when will we have our wording and how, how do we want to do the elected to appointed?
The proposed plan with this article would be to, town meeting would vote to whether or not to make the elected position and appointed position. With that, we would have on the ballot a question for the same, was essentially for special legislation to allow that change. And the ballot question serves for two purposes. One, it's, well, to get, to get the vote by the public, by the residents to move forward with the special act. But also to notify all people who are running for the town clerk position that there is potential that the, uh, three-year term could get short, shortened by the special act. So the special act would probably, best case scenario, would probably be twelve months out. So if it passed the ballot, you're probably looking at twelve months, which then the position that would be currently filled would revert or change to an appointed position. And at that point, we would, you know, fill the position through the traditional hiring process.
So it would be an ATM vote, it would go on the same ballot this year?
Mm-hmm.
And then it would, you'd have to, that would go to the legislature, you wait for that to happen before it would change to appointed if everything goes positive?
Yep.
Yeah, so essentially the same process as legislature as the recall.
Right, no, I understand that part, I didn't know, um-
So we would look probably-
I have, I have a hard time with this, can I? I didn't get to read it.
The elected, uh-
Those who are running.
Position, those that are running will already know before the election happens that their term of office may be shorter than the three years.
And so what happens when, uh, Joe Smith gets elected and he's there for a year?
At the end of the year, with the special election pass.
I mean, how would that work? If it's going to become appointed, do we just say, okay, now we're going to open it up and people can apply?
Yeah, it, it becomes a job, like any other employee in the, uh, the town.
And that person wouldn't, you know, would still be able to apply.
Would be able to apply, okay. All right, so that was my first, I'm going to read this over.
But after one year, if we're unable to find someone right away, does he need someone as a temporary clerk? Is that what you're asking to? Like, you know-
No, I, yeah, no, I mean, if, yeah, I guess if everything was going well, the, who would decide whether we would open it up or just allow it to continue that way? And, and would it be a contracted, I mean, I just don't know how it would work.
We would, we would know-
Yeah.
That the legislature, as it progresses through, we know the terms of the special legislation. And certainly anticipating, you know, positive vote at town meeting and at our election, and anticipating with our representatives to get a sense of what's happening in the legislature that, you know, we could start-
Besides my personal feelings on the job, um, we spent a lot of time when we brought, bringing it from three to five, just figuring out what the ballot question was going to be, what the process was going to be, what we're going to do. And this feels like, I've kind of, I just feel like this was kind of thrown together. And I don't want it to get prolonged. Like, if we do something incorrect or the minutes don't show something and the legislature doesn't get it, and it takes a long time to get it. It just, I, I don't want it to be messy.
No, I think we're ready to move forward with this.
I don't think, I think a lot of people, a lot of towns have done it, so I'm sure that that's where this came from too, so, whatever. So I, the other questions I had, I sort of like the order that they're in, I know we're going to talk about those, but can we use a consent agenda?
That's up to the moderator.
That's up to the moderator? It's in the warrant.
Ah, yes, yeah, it's in the warrant, so we-
Roger.
Yeah, we could use a consent agenda if, uh, so what, uh, which ones are you talking about? Because usually-
My, I was thinking fourteen, thirteen, twelve, eleven, yeah, I thought he was coming in.
Good, good evening, hi, everyone. The application of a consent agenda and the structuring of the warrant overall is up to the Select Board. Traditionally, Wenham has used a consent agenda. Uh, I think it's for the articles that are listed as eleven through fourteen here. Uh, I know that slide's not currently up. But, um, when I was reviewing this, as you were discussing it, I think those were the, uh, articles that I noted that are traditionally, uh, offered by Select Board through a consent agenda.
Thank you, I would just add eight to that. I'd like to ask to add eight, prior year bills. But that would, that makes it a nice-
All right, so, um-
Got it.
All right.
What was it, my, my motion?
Peter, any questions on the, uh, right, then, uh, you want to do the motion?
So I moved to place Articles one through twenty-one as listed, um, today, February seventh, twenty twenty-three, on the April first, twenty twenty-three annual town warrant.
Second.
Further discussion, if not, vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. All right, so, uh, on to G then, but I think we need to, you may even need to keep F, that's the only one that has the sequence, right? So the next question is, uh, are we happy with the sequence?
Is there a rhyme or reason to the way you put it together?
Roger, uh, weighed in on this, and the feeling was that, uh, policy one has to be first, second, you got to decide how to vote. So one and two have to be in those positions. Uh, three, four, and five, uh, thinking that may need some explanation and are sort of all clustered together as to addressing the tax issue before we get into the budget itself. So three, four, and five, and then if we can flip to, going on to six, gets back to the- So three, four, and five, and then if we can flip to going on to six, gets back to the, uh, usual layout of dealing with the ops budget, then going to free cash capital improvement plan. And, um, you want to move eight?
Yeah, I'd move eight down.
Okay, so then it would be, uh, six, seven, and then, uh, we do the article to fund the collective bargaining, and then, uh,
Matching?
Yeah, matching, uh, reserves. Can we go to the next slide?
And then it goes
Eight, eight would slip down to, uh,
Ten.
Yeah, down to ten. So it would take the new ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, all as a consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. And then CPA always needs a little bit of explanation, and Roger, yeah, watch in the hand, go ahead.
Thanks, Gary.
Jump in any time.
What you have listed as article eight on the slide, the prior year's bills, that cannot be part of consent agenda because of quantum of vote.
All right.
Thank you. Never mind, let's
That'll be a four-fifth vote because this is an annual, um, and
Yeah, I should've known that.
That requires a separate vote and, uh, if, if we are using clickers, um, that'll be easy to determine. Uh, it'll just be the arithmetic. If we're not using clickers, um, it will have to be unanimous because the bylaws, look, excuse me, it'll have to be unanimous for me to declare the vote from, uh, the podium. Uh, because our bylaws only allow me to make declarations as a simple majority or two-thirds. Uh, if it's not unanimous, I would, we would have to then go to tellers, uh, in a hand count, uh, in order to assess whether the four-fifth, we're good.
You must've known that when you put this in order, so keep eight where eight is.
All right, so we're back to the order as shown.
As shown.
Fifteen, the CPA always takes a little bit of explanation as we have to go through the vote on each project. Next slide, sixteen, uh, so the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen are the debt exclusion ones. And then you got the, uh, town clerk and the election, so. Any changes in the order? Peter, Diane?
Oh, I think you did a good job on that, whoever
Right, so let's have the motion, uh,
I move to place, I move that we take the articles as listed for the April first, twenty twenty-three annual town warrant.
Second.
Anything else? The vote then, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. All right. So G is done, on to H.
I thought it was gonna take a long
So, uh, having concluded, uh, the budget cycle with a few extraneous things out there still, as we had first declared back in January, the opening, we set the seventh as the closing. So we will, uh, entertain a motion to close the warrant, knowing that on the twenty-first, if need be, we take a open and close internal to the meeting.
So closing the warrant just means no more articles ideally are coming in?
Yep.
But then we need to vote on them and we'll do that all when it's all put together
Yeah, on the twenty-first will be our recommendations.
Our recommendations.
After we receive the FinCom recommendations.
And that'll go through KP Law, everything will be done.
KP Law will wordsmith it, and, yeah, so the, the wording, I think, can change up until we go to print, but the dollar amounts and article intents by title and, uh, order cannot change. Unless you reopen the warrant and do it.
I move that the Wenham Select Board close the annual town meeting warrant. Look at that for April first, twenty twenty-three, annual town meeting. I repeated myself on February seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Anything else? Vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Oh, I was on the wrong page, that's why.
On to I. So, uh, at the workshop, we, uh, talked about, uh, condensed work week, some advantages to it, and, um, knowing that other communities are moving to this. And that, uh, some areas are already not staffed on Fridays due to the, uh, manning and, uh, hours worked for each place. And we've done a, uh, for several weeks, we've, uh, looked at Fridays, which are already short nine to one, and that we've generally had zero to three walk-ins and/or phone calls total. So I don't think it's gonna have any real impact on the availability of public access to the, uh, town hall. And knowing that we do have, uh, you know, some, uh, idea that, uh, there's some people that commuting or the school drop-off times, that would find the, uh, town hall opening earlier would be a convenience. So, uh, do we, any questions, comments, or flip to the next slide if we could?
So does it end up being the same hours?
Yeah, so we, we, uh, four, four hours off on Friday are eliminated. And then we open town hall one hour early, Monday to Friday, Monday to Thursday.
Thirty-two and a half hours, yeah.
It's good. Less four on Friday.
Thirty-six and a half hours?
Yeah, all right.
What do I know?
All right, so it ends up being, uh, eight o'clock opening, Monday to Thursday, and then, uh, to four-thirty each day with the late day on Tuesdays.
And, and all the staff are, are aware and are able to work those hours?
We've, uh, polled each individual, right?
They talked independently with each person, so they weren't swayed by the
I would imagine so. Is it a savings at all?
Well, you know, we never, we didn't do the math to quantify it, but the fact of the matter is, we won't be heated. Just like the weekends, we don't heat the building envelope up to seventy degrees like you do on a typical workday. So it'll be one additional day that the building, I believe it's fifty-eight or sixty degrees. Um, and also the reduction in, uh, carbon footprint. I mean, people's commute, the, uh, you're in your car, gets reduced by twenty percent.
And so, um, will Friday still be counted as a business day, say for the twenty-day appeal period or for posting notices?
Uh, well, we could look into, I don't believe so because I believe it's typically town hall. The operating hours of town hall dictates the, whether it's counted as a business day.
I heard both, so I don't know, that's why, yeah.
Like for an open, for, uh, you know, Freedom for Information Request or something like that, you count. Just like if it's closed for a snowstorm, you don't count that day.
Okay.
So some schedules
I think we should look into that, though.
Yeah, so some schedules will shift a little bit, like the, uh, meeting prep for here, but, um,
And when, cause when the notice should be posted?
Yeah, notice posted.
Excuse me. Yeah, we do it differently in Manchester, that's why I'm like, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can
And they're, and they're all different, you know, the land use twenty days might be different than the open meeting law forty-eight hours.
Yeah, but all good points, we'll make sure we cover all that.
I think it's tricky. So it's pretty awesome. I move that the Wenham Select, any more discussion? I move that the Wenham Select Board adopt town hall hours and implementation as defined above. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight to four-thirty, Tuesday, eight to seven, starting March sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
And the roll call vote then, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Certainly, that's so cool.
I can tell you guys got a lot of happy campers.
All right.
But listen, we can still meet on Fridays. I still like to meet with you guys on Fridays.
We'll play over pickleball.
All right.
I don't know when that's happening.
Okay, so, uh, Jay Quick, uh, welcome back.
Yeah.
I, you want your, uh, two assignments back?
Not exactly, not exactly. So I had was, had two assignments, the liaison, everybody had two, right?
Right.
So I was master plan and the veterans committee. You took over master plan and you took over veterans committee. I feel kinda guilty and I should take on more. I do worry that jumping into the master plan committee at this time is kind of late. I, I've read some minutes and I've watched some things, but I haven't really been as, as involved.
All right.
So I don't know whether you want me to swap something else to make your work easy, or you wanna keep veteran?
Why don't we just, uh, swap veterans back?
I like those guys.
I know. Yeah, yeah, I'll do it, I'll do it. Cause I, I think, cause you just had or starting the first of the building committees meetings, so I think that's
The school building?
The school building.
Okay.
So that's gonna be a workload there.
Okay, so I'll jump back into veterans if it's all right with you. You, we could still go.
It's in our list.
All right, then, uh,
Does that make it?
Move that the Wenham Select Board appoint Diane and Katie Bruko back to the Veterans Committee effective February seventh, twenty twenty-three, replacing Peter M. Clay, who was temporarily appointed August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes, all right, got that one, Catherine? All right. J, Kay?
How did you know I didn't want the ma- master plan back? You didn't even have it up there.
All right, so, uh, Kay is, uh,
Can we, can we move over it and do it next time?
Yes, so, uh, Kay, the ARPA is essentially just a thirty-second update from, uh, Steve that shows the status of all the ARPA things. So we'll maintain this slide going forward that shows, uh,
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, yep, go for it.
Shows the, uh, who the project lead is, so that, uh, going forward, lesson learned from the past, we'll have one individual in the, uh, staff in charge as the project leader.
Nice.
Which is, uh, and we're going through the steps of project scope, quote solicited, work started, and completion. Anything to add to that? Steve Quick?
Joe P.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, you know, the fire department's first, they won the race, the first one to spend all their money.
Wow.
Go, Steve.
So, yeah, so the jaws of life, so life-saving for the community, it's already out there.
Yeah, and also be, you know, just a good tool that we can, from time to time, give a little update, see what we are on the projects. I mean, some are, some are gonna take much longer than, than others, but, uh, processes.
Well, Margaret's doing pretty good on hers too, so.
All right, then, uh,
That's very nice, I like that idea. So now every, someone, each of our projects has a point person, is what we did here. Cool.
All right. Next slide then.
I think that's it. I think so. Quick question back to the warrant. So in the warrant, when, um, all those debt exclusions, that would affect everybody's taxes, and so that will be explained at
Yeah, so on the twenty-first, and actually, I'll have an update for, if folks out there wanna go to the finance committee on the fifteenth. I'll have an updated forecast that reflects the most recent, uh, anticipated. There's a forecast floating out there that's been circulated a couple times, and that is reflective of some, uh, of the West Wenham Park being at five hundred thousand.
Old figures.
Uh, having the police roof in there. So we'll, you know, massage that model to show the impact based on the most recent numbers, and that will be at the select boards meeting as well as the twenty-first.
And those numbers will appear as a dollar figure per hundred thousand dollars
Yeah.
of value. So each individual out in the public can see, okay, it's gonna be a hundred dollars for a hundred thousand, and my house is worth this.
So
Quick multiple patient, I'll get a pretty exact number.
Instead of doing rate impact because of the rate can fluctuate up and down, we're doing, like Gary said, so if you get just seven-dollar impact annually, and you had a million-dollar assessment, you know that, you know, it's just seven times ten, cause it's dollars per hundred thousand assessment.
And then is there time? Um, we should do a warrant, do we do, call it a warrant hearing here that we go over?
Yes, the warrant hearing is the Monday before town meeting.
Okay, so we will, we do have time for that, okay. All right, those are my other questions.
All right, anything, Joe? All right, Michelle? Catherine, you got everything all set?
Absolutely.
Anything else, Steve?
That is all.
All right, so rather long meeting, but we'll take the, uh, motion.
I think it's this.
Oh, I move, with nothing further to discuss, I move that we adjourn the, uh, select board meeting of, uh,
February seventh?
February seventh, two, twenty twenty-three at nine twenty-four.
Wow, second.
The vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Thank you, everybody in the audience, and, uh, for all those people that guessed it on